Okay. Good afternoon. In the traditional times, Eastern Santa Cruz County. Eastern Santa Cruz County's nonprofit, nonpartisan news organization. We're really happy to have this many people show up for this.
It's all right, we're having technicals.
Okay. I can do it again, I can stand the racket. Okay. First, I want to thank Casino Farley and the Patagonian Creative Arts Association. This is an amazing place to have these forums. A couple of instructions for the audience. A restroom is available just outside that blue door. Please help yourself to water out there on the refreshment table. Please feel free to leave much appreciated donations in the jar out there to help offset the expenses of this forum. We are a nonprofit. Please turn off your cell phones and your beeping watches. And, the most important thing, we request that you treat all our candidates fairly and with respect. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping, no cheering, no jeering, and no calling out. The question and answer portion of the forum will take about 90 minutes. After that, the candidates will each be given a table and feel free to come up and talk to them individually. This forum is being shared live on our Facebook channel, it'll be on our website and on our YouTube channel. It's part of our ongoing voter education effort to help voters make informed decisions. We're really excited to welcome, we love Nogales here again, we're so excited about collaborating with them. They'll be broadcasting this to a really wide audience. We believe it's imperative as a democracy that we have informed and active participation in government, and local news has a mandate to take an active role in that process. So, we hope with this program you'll learn more about the candidates for Board of Supervisors and their vision for our county. On behalf of the PRT, our Board of Directors, our citizen journalists, and our staff, I would like to welcome the three candidates running for Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, District Three, who have graciously consented to be here. We have with us the incumbent Bruce Bracker, running as a Democrat. We have John Fanning, who's running as a Democrat, and Jesus Jerez, running as a Republican. The two Democratic contenders will be facing off in the July 30th primary. Mr. Jerez will be running against the winner of that primary. I want to introduce our moderator for this forum, Dave Lumia. Dave is a longtime Arizona resident, graduate of the U of A with a degree in journalism. He's a former sports editor for the Arizona Republic and the Mesa Tribune. Currently, he's program manager for the Sedona Conference Illegal Think Tank based in Phoenix. He and his wife live in Sonoyta and are two of our More Than 20 volunteer citizen journalists. It's okay to clap for our audience. Dave, thank you for moderating this forum. I'm just going to take one minute to explain the procedure. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves. After that, Dave will be asking questions. He'll ask the first question of John Fanning, because he drew number one. John will have two minutes to answer the question. The other two candidates will be given a minute each to answer the same question. The second question will go to Bruce Bracker, the third to Mr. Jerez. At the end of the questioning, each candidate will be given one minute for closing statements. So, on with the forum.
I've been chosen first, so my two-minute opening. I want to thank the Patagonia Regional Times and the Tint Shet Theater for hosting this District Three Supervisor Forum. My name is John Fanning, and I am running for and asking for your support as the next Santa Cruz County District Three Supervisor. I am the husband, father, and grandfather to my buddy, Luca John. I've had 35 years of success as an educational leader and now want to make a positive impact on our community and our county. I am deeply committed to our community and eager to bring a fresh perspective and dedicated leadership to this important role. I have always believed in the power of hard work and integrity and community service. These values have guided me throughout my career and will continue to do so as your county supervisor. As part of numerous service organization boards in the community, it is evident I have a desire to help and serve others. I want to help build Santa Cruz County and especially District Three to be the best that it can be. I want to be your full-time supervisor. I am passionate about preserving the unique character and natural beauty of our county. As we face increased pressures from development and mining, it is crucial that we implement responsible growth policies and protect our environment and maintain the rural charm that we all cherish. I will work tirelessly to balance economic development with environmental stewardship, ensuring that future generations can enjoy the same beautiful landscapes and quality of life that we do. I am committed to transparency and accountability in government. As your full-time county supervisor, I will be a strong advocate for open communication and community involvement. I believe that our local government should be a true reflection of our community's values and priorities. I will seek your input, listen to your concerns, and work collaboratively to address the challenges that we face. I am excited about the opportunity to serve our community and to work with each of you to create a brighter future for Santa Cruz and District Three. Thank you for your support and your vote in this upcoming election. Together, we can make a difference.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Bracker, and I'm your District Three Supervisor. Even before being elected to office, close to eight years ago, I have worked to make our community better. A better place to live, work, retire, play, raise our families, build our lives, because that's what living in a small community is all about. My family roots go back in Santa Cruz County 100 years, so my vision for our county is the next 100 years. We have had great success in my first two terms, starting with the creation of Border Counties Coalition, which I co-founded the first months I was in office. This partnership with Pima County, Yuma, and Cochise allows us to speak in one voice as we advocate for our state and federal governments for the needs as our border communities. The modernization of the Mariposa Road, the flyover from Mariposa Road to I-19, which protects the children as they commute to Nogales High School. The repairs of the IOI to help eliminate debris, which now includes an improved library, a sheriff's substation, community meeting room, and a space for a visitor's center. New communication towers in Rurico and Toubac. New sheriff's communication systems, including radios. Broadband project in Patagonia. And fighting to get more federal dollars for better broadband coverage throughout Santa Cruz County for all. The best part of these projects is that they were mostly grant-funded, saving us millions of dollars. But there is still work to be done. The Community Protections and Benefits Agreement with the county, the town of Patagonia, the city of Nogales, and South 32 will be a guiding document on how the three public entities interact with South 32. The Paturo Creek Bridge will break around next spring, creating an overpass over the Wash and the railroad at Ruby Road. And after many years of advocating, the federal government has started a feasibility study on the Deacon Seamy Portrementary, which will tell them what they need to build for our community to thrive for the next 100 years. I'm asking for your vote, so I can continue to make our community a better place to live for all of us. Thank you.
My name is Jesus Jerez. I was born in Alho, Arizona, a mining town. To this day, I can still go to Alho and see the scars that mining does to the property, to the neighborhood, to the landscape. I graduated high school in 1971. It was... It was a traumatic month for me. I lost my funding for my education at the University of Arizona. At the same time that I realized that without going to school, I had no exemption, because I was not married, I didn't have children, and there was a thing called the Vietnam War going on, and the draft. So, I beat 'em to the punch, I volunteered. I served from '71-'74. In 1974, I got out, I became a park ranger at Oregon Pipe Cactus National Monument. I was there for two years. I decided that I needed something different and put in for Immigration Officer Inspector in Nogales, at the Port of Entry in Nogales. I was... On the very first day, I was asked what my job was going to be. And I said I was going to catch all the bad guys and put them all in jail, to catch all the dopers and put them all in jail. They were disappointed with my answer, so I said, "Well, what is my job going to be?" And they told me, "You're going to serve the community. Out of every 100 people you inspect, one, maybe two are bad. Everybody else is good. So, get those people across as quickly and as lawfully as you can." Ever since that day, I took it to heart. I am here to serve my community. My community of today is not the same community that we had back in those days. So, as your candidate, I'm asking for your support to change the direction that we've been traveling in. Give it a new sense of being, with new kind of leadership, a new thought process. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Before I give the first question, I just wanted to thank all of the readers and members of the community who send in questions. We aren't going to be able to get to all of them, but we did try to incorporate as many as we could into our questions. Some of them we kind of combined, so that we can make sure that those questions are answered. Our first question for Mr. Fanning is, what is the county's single most pressing issue, and how do you propose fixing it?
There are a lot of issues in the county right now, but if I had to choose one, I would say the trust in county government. With some of the things that have happened over the past few years, I can go back probably 10, 15 years ago, and there were some things that shouldn't have happened. So, in my humble opinion, I think that we need to gain the trust back from the constituents, which means we need to listen to the constituents. We need to make sure that we're transparent. As a longtime coach, my philosophy was always being transparent. Transparent builds trust. Once you have trust, there's not anything that you can't do. So, the fact that some of the things that have happened recently, oversight might be one of the reasons, having one set of eyes on things that pertains to money, not best practice. So, it's important that we gain the trust. And like I said before, how do you do that? You make sure that you're into the community, you make sure that you're at events, you make sure that you're transparent. I understand the importance of going into executive session. I'm part of a school district, and I go to many board meetings. And they're useful. But let's not go into executive session unless we truly need to do so. The people want to hear what's being said, so we need to listen. You're going to hear throughout my discussion today that I'm a firm believer in listening to the constituents. It's not about John Fanning. And in my closing, you'll hear, it's about what is happening in the community. And the only way to really understand what's happening is talking. Once you talk to people and you're open with them, that builds trust. Once you have trust, you can move mountains. Thank you.
Supervisor Bracker?
Thank you. The biggest issue facing Santa Cruz County right now is the development of the Hermosa Mine in South 32. The development of the Community Protections and Benefits Program, when we're working, collaborating with the town of Patagonia, collaborating with the city of Nogales, and working with South 32, for all the different things that we're going to be asking South 32 to do, above and beyond what they are required to do. That is the biggest issue.
Mr. Jerez?
I believe that the biggest issue that we have to look forward to or need to solve right now is the health and safety of the community. I live at the north end of San Cayetano, and 250 yards south of my home is a cartel drug trade. The sheriff, when they respond to my home, do not have radio service, do not have telephone service. If you stay on my front door, they can't reach out. Shots fired at night, we call the sheriff's office, sheriff's office responds, they can't call out. One of them got in trouble because they did a security check while he was at my home, and he didn't respond back saying, "I'm okay." That is the first issue, health and safety of the community. Without those radio systems being put back in, everybody here is at risk. I was an EMT volunteer, EMT firefighter for 18 years, served duty at the crossroads before and at old ambulances. Some places you have no radio, I know exactly how that feels. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Bracker, at the Sheriff's Candidate Forum two weeks ago, the candidates spoke repeatedly about the lack of staffing and the need for additional training, both of which would come at significant cost, so how would you go about addressing that?
Well, currently, right now, in our budget, there are six openings in the sheriff's department for deputies. Every time when we sit down annually for our budget, we listen to what the sheriff is asking us for. We know that they've been talking to us about radios, and this year, we were able to solve that radio issue by going to the state and getting $3.9 million in funding to replace the receivers and the radios in all the vehicles. It's just a question of budgeting, and it's a question of budgeting not just for this year, but also working on budgeting for multiple years in the future. So, we can't just always take... We're a small community, we have a limited budget. You can't always take the hit in one year, but if you're doing multiple-year budgeting, then those goals can be achieved, and that is something that the new county administrator is working towards. Thank you.
Mr. Jerez?
I think it's very important that we take a really good look at the sheriff's office. We are... We're using a lot of deputies who can make much more money by just traveling 40 miles further north than they can here. I think we're going to spend less money if we give them better pay. We spend money training them, and then they leave us, because just 40 miles away is a place where they can make $5,000 to $7,000 more. If we spend that little bit of money in the front, keep them here, we're going to be spending less money in the long run. Yes, it will be difficult to finance these things, but these are something that you have to take the long look, not the short look. We have to retain the people that we train. The money we spent on them has to remain in the community. Thank you.
Mr. Fanning?
I agree with both of the candidates. Budgeting, I think, is incredibly important. But I also think it's important that the entire county, especially District Three, is patrolled. In the near future, within the next five years, we're going to have 100 trucks traveling down our roads in and 100 trucks out. As I come into Patagonia on a pretty consistent basis lately, if I'm not mistaken, I know there's a sheriff's deputy vehicle, but there's no one in that vehicle. It doesn't take too much time to understand that there's no one there. So, it's important that budgeting is important. We need to take a look at that, we need to talk to all the stakeholders. We need to make it so that if you are in the sheriff's department, like Mr. Jerez said, that you're proud of what you do and the pay is where it needs to be. So, the biggest takeaway here is we need to make sure that we patrol the entire portion of the county.
Thank you. Mr. Jerez? I assume you're aware, all of you on the desk, that the allegations of $4 million plus in missing funds from the county treasury? And this comes on the heels of some other scandals involving Tony Estrada and Felipe Fuentes. It wouldn't be a stretch to say that there's been a loss of trust among residents regarding the lack of internal policies and oversight and safeguarding taxpayer dollars. So, what is the Board of Supervisors' responsibilities for these scandals, and how can you ensure this won't continue to be a recurring problem?
A very good question. I was employed by the US government as a law enforcement officer at the Port of Entry for just short of 38 years. One of the things that, when you get to be in upper management, responsibility of oversight is a big part of your job, and it was a big part of ours. We were one of the most looked-at agencies anywhere in the government. We were in the front page, everyday complaints, and I was one of the officers that investigated complaints. Anything you did wrong or apparently wrong, and anybody that came up and said they did something wrong, we were looked at very well. This present problem that we have at the county, we have a different supervisory position in the government. We were responsible when somebody below us did something wrong. It did go on our record. So, this problem that we have now is one of our responsibilities. The Board of Supervisors has to take responsibility, do a forensic audit of that place to see where it started. We know that one year, when someone came on, it was deemed to be okay, but apparently, something was wrong with that oversight, because it was not okay. We need to relook at how we enforce our supervision of that office. Thank you.
The first thing that we need to have is we need to have strength in transparency. I already mentioned before about open meetings, when we can have them. There needs to be ethics training. I know in education, we take training every single year, and it may be the same training every year, but one of those trainings is about ethics. And I don't care if you're supervisor, you're the treasurer, assessor, it doesn't matter. There needs to be ethics training, okay? There needs to be no conflict of interests. I think there's too many conflict of interest right now with county government, so we need to take a look at that and make sure that people are making decisions not based on what's best for them and will help them and help their friends, but will help the constituents. There needs to be merit-based hiring. There can't be hiring with people that, "This is my friend, so we're going to hire them." And ultimately, the commitment needs to be at the leadership level, and we need to lead by example. We need to be ethically sound. Thank you.
So, I share your frustration with the situation with the former elected county treasurer. And we are collaborating with the appropriate authorities, and I'm reading this because this is what the attorneys have told me I can say. We are collaborating with the appropriate authorities to verify the truth of what happened, and I promise that we are working to recover as much as we can. But please know that it's an ongoing and federal investigation. I can't explain, I can't expand on the topics related to the current investigation, but whatever the findings are, we're in the investigation, we will make those public. When you're talking about what happened with Sheriff Estrada and the overtime pay for work hours, that was reported, that went through the auditor general. And when you're talking about what happened with Mr. Fuentes, that's a really challenging oversight on valuations of property. So, I'm not sure that anything could have caught that except for what the FBI was able to do there.
Thank you. Next question for Mr. Fanning. How do you respond to residents in eastern Santa Cruz County who feel they have a disproportionate tax burden while receiving very little in services from the county? And how would you go about changing that perception?
To be very honest, this question was asked four years ago, as part of the forum that occurred four years ago. And, you know, I did have a chance to sit down with the current assessor and discuss taxes. And there are formulas for taxes, so I'm not going to go into the formulas, but I will go into the disproportionate goods and services that are dispersed throughout the county. For instance, eastern portion of the county, the taxes might be a little bit higher, but when I look at what you have out here in the eastern portion of the county, there can be so much more. I think there needs to be more services out here, more recreation. I know that this is an incredible portion of the county, I know there's tourism galore out here, and there's some great things happening, but in my humble opinion, this portion of the county's not getting the best bang for their buck. So, that's one of the things that we need to take a look at. We need to talk to stakeholders, we need to talk to the town of Patagonia, we need to talk to the leaders in Sonoyta, the wineries, and we need to find out together, as stakeholders, what we can do to have more services out here, to make this... It's already a tourism... It's a great tourism spot, we just need to find more that we can, you know, give to the eastern portion of the county.
So, when the constituents talk to me about this issue, the very first thing I need to remind them about is the taxes that we pay. We pay them to control the Health Department, the Sheriff's Department, the courts, the county school superintendent, the recorder, the treasurer. That's where our property taxes go to pay for. The roads and those types of things, those dollars come from HERF revenues, which is the gasoline sales tax that the federal government gives to the state, and then the state distributes to the counties. Fortunately, Santa Cruz County gets an additional chunk of money because of the amount of tourism that comes from northern Mexico into our community. But each year, the Santa Cruz County Rodeo and Fairgrounds gets $25,000, that's every year since I've been elected. We just remodeled the facility, the library, and those things I spoke about earlier. We're working on a wine and tourism study, also going to handle, hopefully, the overlay district. I'll stop.
I have been talking to people who live in the eastern part, and there is a lot of dissatisfaction about what they feel is the burden that they have to take. And I kind of tend to agree with them. Yes, we want tourism to come here, but it's not as strong or impactful as what comes to Nogales and Toubac in that border because of the highway. But I believe that Sonoyta has a great future about what they can do to attract more tourism out here. How about limousines that'll take you on all these tastings and drop you off at an Airbnb that is local, so that you don't have to drive home drunk? Something like that. I believe talking to the constituency here will tell us what it is that they would most like to see and how to break down the taxes. By the way, lowering taxes is one of my platforms. Thank you.
Supervisor Bracker? From some of the interactions we've had with our readers, there seems to be a growing feeling of helplessness regarding South 32's operations and the ability or willingness of the county to intervene on behalf of the residents' concerns, whether it's the Cross Creek Connector, emergency access, reconfiguration of their advisory panel, environmental concerns. So, what role would you play and should the county play in addressing those concerns?
The role the county plays in many of the things that you talked about, the advisory panel, the South 32 advisory panel, that's their business, that's their advisory panel. They get to select who they want on it. When we're talking about Emily Lane, we're working with South 32 to try and find an emergency exit route for them, for the constituents who live on Emily Lane right now. So, those things are all in process. So, we're listening to the constituents, and we're trying to meet their needs. The Cross Creek Connector was a result of the people in Patagonia saying, "We don't want the mining trucks coming through Patagonia." So, that was the solution. So, we are listening, and we are reacting. The greatest thing that the county can do right now is work collaborating with the town of Patagonia, the city of Nogales, and South 32 to work on the Community Protections and Benefits Program. A lot of people like calling it a good neighbor agreement, and they think that's a mixed characterization of what we're trying to do, because we're looking for specific things from South 32 that normally they would not be providing our community. So, we're asking for... And it's difficult for me to comment on a lot of these things, because I'm on the team right now that's trying to put this together. And I can tell you that the basic things are additional air quality monitoring, additional water monitoring, and then other benefits that we can see throughout our community, because the impacts of mining... benefits that we can see throughout our community, because the impacts that mining will have on our community are considerable, but the benefits financially should also be considerable for our community.
So the mine is going to happen, is already happening, and there's no way that it can be stopped. It's a federal government thing. There's no way to stop it. But what we can do is influence it. The people that have been speaking up, I know I've listened to what they've said, and some of it's a bit extreme, but you have to ask for a lot so that you can give up a little bit to meet them in the middle. What we're doing now, what the supervisors are doing now, is actively talking to these groups that are working with the mine, and they are telling us what they want to do so that we can give it out to our constituents to opine on. So listening to the people that want to complain about the mine, talking to the people, making sure that there were what's happening at the mine, is the best way to handle any problems that may come up with the mine. Thank you.
I understand the frustration. I was part of the South 32 panel recently. That was disbanded, and the reason for the disbanding was because there was a lot of heat on South 32, and I support that. We need to make sure we keep an eye on our water. We need to make sure we keep an eye on Sky Islands. We have a beautiful, beautiful community, so we need to make sure that we hold their feet to the fire. Now, they mentioned the protection, excuse me, the agreement. First of all, is it binding? We need to find a binding agreement to make sure that the mine is following all regulations, especially when it comes to our environment. We have an incredible environment. We need to talk to the experts. We have experts sitting in this audience right now. We need to continue to collaborate with those folks, and if it turns to law, then that's the avenue we need to take. Thank you.
Next question is...
The Community Protections and Benefits Agreement is a binding agreement, is a legal document?
Next question for Mr. Haddas. With the continuing impacts from climate change... With the continuing impact from climate change and other environmental disruptions such as large-scale mining, what can the county do to ensure that water resources are adequately protected?
In the eastern part of the community, of the county, we know that the water table is falling. That's one of the first things that they told me when I asked, what kind of problems do you have out here? So we know that they're taking 6 million gallons of water out of the mine, and we know that there are people that are saying, we have to make sure that that water is safe. Well, if, what if instead of putting it down Harshaw Creek, we pipe it to someplace in the valley here where that can be used to recharge the aquifer that we're sitting on? That's something. Only a couple of people have mentioned something like that. That study that we did on expanding businesses and housing in the Sonora area, why not put that to figuring out a better solution to finding out how we can find more water for the local area and not impact it any further? Am I out of time? I have a minute, okay. Sorry, I saw a blank. So I think that the answers that we're looking for are found within the body of people that live there. They know better than anybody else what they need and what they could stand to do for the improvement of whatever is the problem that they're looking at. I know, like Mr. Fanning said, there are experts here right now that we can talk to. There are experts sitting out there on the front porch that we can talk to. There are experts all over the country that we can talk to, but the problem is, the water table is falling. How do we fix that? And that has to come back. Every decision that we make has to take that into consideration before we make any dastardly changes that will make that problem bigger. Thank you.
I want to quote Patagonia Vice Mayor, and I apologize if I misstate this name, Stabile? Water is more precious than zinc and lead and manganese, which means we need to have real-time water monitoring. We need to monitor upstream. We need to monitor downstream. We need to make sure that, when we take a look at that, we, once again, we hold their feet to the fire. As far as the four, excuse me, the five or six million gallons that are going to be in Harshaw Creek on a daily basis, that's something that's very alarming to me. And we've said, without water in this community, we're going to face some pretty incredible issues. So real important, we talk to the community. Emergency response planning is also important. That 100-year flood, we need to take a look at what happens with that water along with that 100-year flood, and I'm stopped.
Water security, especially in East County, is an issue. We have a study session coming up very shortly, the Board of Supervisors with the University of Arizona, who have done studies on transboundary aquifers. And so that's probably going to lead to additional studies that we cannot be asking them to do. One of the things that South 32 is asking permission from the National Forest Service through in the need for the process is for recharge basins. So they are looking to take some of the 6 million gallons and do recharge. In the western part of the Santa Cruz County, we do have a huge advantage, whereas the wastewater treatment facility is an international wastewater treatment facility, is releasing 14 and a half million gallons of water daily into the Santa Cruz River and is recharging that basin. So water security is definitely an issue. You always need to be mindful for it. And also, in the community benefits and protection and benefits, that water monitoring is one of the things that the town of Patagonia and the county are looking for.
Mr. Fanning? Some of you have mentioned the study that was done regarding wine and cuisine and tourism in the eastern part of the county. It seemed apparent that there was a disconnect between the county and the residents in the Sonora Elgin area, and one of the messages that came out of these meetings was that there are a lot of folks over on this side of the county who like things the way they are. So how does the county balance the reality of somewhat inevitable growth while maintaining the area's rural character that is such a concern to the residents?
How incredibly important. The, I believe that, well, the first thing we need to do is we need to listen. We need to listen to the constituents, especially those that it's going to affect. If I'm not mistaken, I believe it passed in the last steering committee, seven votes were yay, so they are going to move forward. So it is vitally important that we continue to listen to the folks that it's going to affect. We need to keep an eye on the water. One of the, I think the last question that was asked is also, you know, a big portion of this question. We need to keep an eye on the water and making sure that the water is available. We don't, you know, that's one of the things that we need to continue to look at. We need to preserve our open space, and I understand. In fact, I just received a text yesterday from one of my mentors, as I was becoming a principal in Arizona School Administrators, Lori Emery from Vail, and she congratulated me and wished me luck. And that just shows you right there that we need to balance the, with the folks who don't want growth, perhaps, and want it to stay the way it is, with those who want to see a little growth and more tourism. So there has to be that balance. And how do you have that balance? Well, we already have a steering committee, so we need to listen to the people on the steering committee as we move forward. Thank you.
It was a very interesting process to get to where we were right now. This is the third try that the county has attempted to create building guidelines in the Sonora area. And one of the things that you have to worry about when you're creating building guidelines is, in Arizona, there is a law that says you can't take property owners' rights away from them. So by going through this process, by doing an overlay district in specific areas, that's where the county can create incentives for people to build and consolidate businesses. So that's one of the things. The other thing this was, is this was to try to, this was part of an option of the COVID studies that we've been doing since we've been working on COVID recovery. And one of the things that we were trying to do is create, replace the lost jobs. And this could be food trucks coming out of western county, coming over to eastern county. This could be the use of the commercial kitchens around the area. And I have a lot more to add to this, but I'm told to stop.
I think the answer has already been stated. We need to listen to the community and what they will like to see and what they will tolerate. I know that there are different communities in Santa Cruz County, and the Sonora Elgin is different from the other four. We've listened to the other four in the past and sort of maintained our guidances or taken on projects according to what they wish to see. Sonora is no different. If they want to see a preservation of open spaces, we can do that. What about the main business center here, the crossroads? How do we want to see that? What do we want to see in 30, 40, 50 years? And I think that the people here can tell us they would like to see more businesses there, maybe not too big hotels, but they can tell us what change they'd like to see. We know the need. They can give us the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bracker? How can the county best address the affordable housing crisis, which is exacerbated in the eastern part of the county by the both mining employees and the rise of short-term rentals? Should there be an ordinance such as been implemented in Patagonia to regulate short-term rentals?
So how does the county plan on addressing...
Yeah, what can the county do to address the affordable housing prices?
So again, also, part of the COVID recovery strategy that the county's been working on, we reached out to NLCAB, National Association of Latina Home Builders. They have facilitated a study in East County. We're working on them in phase, we were working on phase two of that, but then a lot of our energy got transferred over into the, excuse me, into the wine and tourism study, because they were the same consultants that were doing both things. But quite honestly, there, as South 32 grows and as, you know, people who are living in this community can afford housing, it's not only going to be in the east county, it's going to be in the west county. The price of housing is going up, and we are going to have to develop a plan to come with that. But usually, those plans are, come from people like NLCAB or those other organizations, but we need to listen to them.
I spoke with some people that were familiar with a problem that a local resident had, specifically addressing the miners that are going to be coming in, and there's definitely a lack of housing in Patagonia. So he wanted to establish a trader park on a rather sizable piece of property that he had, but he, and I haven't spoken to him directly, so much of this still has to be determined. But he was told he couldn't do it. The question of why, I don't know. I still have to reach out and touch him, but there is a solution for short-term affordable housing. A lot of the miners use their traders to get around to do certain jobs, short-term jobs or long-term jobs. Why not open up local properties to facilitate their being able to park their RVs and work at the mine? Something that's controllable and brings income into the local area. Thank you.
I recently was on a Zoom meeting, and I didn't take part. I was just a person in the audience, and I know that was one of the discussions of the town of Patagonia, talking about, you know, affordable housing and rentals. And my philosophy is, the town is moving forward with ideas. I know that there's a five-acre plot somewhere in this vicinity. There may be water and electricity up to that spot. That's what they're talking about. But once again, we need to listen. We need to listen to the folks in Patagonia and support the town of Patagonia. You know, we need to take, perhaps, look at zoning regulations. We need to take a look at traffic and how that'll affect traffic. We need to take a look at making sure that, and I'm not sure that this is an issue, but noise regulations. So it's important that we communicate with the county and the town, and we come together. We need to support.
Mr. Haddas, are you in favor of HCR 2060, the Secure the Border Act? Why not?
So I did my entire government career on the border, protecting the border. I'm not, I haven't read the full act and seen what other problems are within the act. I do know that I was the head of the prosecutions office, and even though we intercepted 100 felons a day, we were allowed to prosecute one a day, which in the message app, you got a 1 in 100 chance of going to jail if you do something really, really bad. So right now, if you want a secure border, you have to secure the border. You have to give us a chance to prosecute those people that we catch. Problem is, if we don't have the funds to house them, then we're not going to be able to prosecute them. So if sufficient funds are included in securing the border, I would say that it would be something good that we can use. If you don't have the funds, and that's how they control this for the longest time, is if they didn't give us enough money to house two people a day in Santa Cruz County jails, we could only prosecute one person a day. The money is how you control it. So as long as the money is there to secure the border, that border will be secured. Thank you.
This is one of those topics that I don't have, kind of like Mr. Haddas, I don't have a lot of background with this law. The little that I've read, I know there's some additions to the bill that would make it difficult for me to support. The bottom line is, we need to support, excuse me, we need to make sure that our borders are secure. We need to make sure that the citizens in the, it doesn't matter whether you're in the eastern portion of the county, the western, that they're safe. So way back when I was at NAU, this type of thing happened, where I didn't have a background on, one of the gentlemen, I was trying to be part of the Blue Chiana fraternity, and he asked me a question about socialized medicine. I didn't have an answer for that, but I did do my due diligence. I did look, and I found information, and this is one of the things that I'd have to do here. I'd have to look a little bit deeper and listen to the folks at the government level that have a better perspective.
Thank you very much for this question, because this is a really easy question. Basically, what this bill will do is it says that every sheriff deputy and every police officer in Santa Cruz County will have to become a border patrol agent and arrest people that are crossing the border illegally. Right now, border patrol commands our police departments 72-1. So this is a huge cost shift onto you, the taxpayers, because not only are we going to be arresting them, we're going to be prosecuting them, we're going to be jailing them. This is an absolutely horrible law. They have, the federal government, this is a federal responsibility. There was a bill a few months ago in front of the federal government that would have taken care of this. They chose not to pass it, but in response to that, this is what they've given us. Can I go back to the housing question for one second? Right now, Santa Cruz County is issuing 300 billion permits per year per houses.
Mr. Fanning is next. If additional revenue sources were to become available for the county, what is one area, what is the top area of services that would be your priority for those... of, what is the top area of services that would be your priority for those?
There are four things that I focus on, education being one of those, preservation being another, and then representation. But I'm going to go to the fourth and that's recreation. I think throughout this county, there's very little recreation activity for youth, for adults. There, you know, in Tubac, you have pickleball, okay? Ria Rico, you have the walking paths. In, in, you know, the eastern portion of the county, you have, you know, bicycle, you have tourism, but there's not much for recreation. One of the things I'd like to do sit in, and this has more to do with the Ria Rico area, this portion of my discussion. We have the Ria Rico Fitness Center, that's sitting empty. There was a fire, it's sitting empty. There's not a doubt in my mind that we could use that to build pickleball, to make sure that, you know, the swimming pool is up to standards. They used to have some beautiful tennis courts. They're gone. So I think, you know, recreation there is incredibly important. Why can't we do the same thing in the eastern portion of the county that we've done in Ria Rico with the walking paths? One of the things that I'm, I'm working through the school district, of course, is pickleball courts in our community, in Ria Rico. Right now, there is none. With Tubac, Nogales, I think just had some new courts put in. But I think recreation is incredibly important. It, it's great for, for a person's health and it's great for the community. It's a way for the community to come together. So that's one of the things that I would definitely take a look at, whether it be walking paths, whether, whether it be, you know, activities for adults and youth alike. I think that's an important thing that we need to take a look at that right now is not present.
Is your source of funding one-time or is it continual?
Let's pretend that it's a one-time source of funding.
We like continual. If it was a continual source of funding, then I think that we would need to go and try to address some of the salaries of our first responders because that would help us fill those positions that we have open. One-time funding, it is, the last thing, and it really shouldn't be the last thing on the totem pole, but it is, always has been here, is the recreation and building fields and building places where our communities can get together. And I know that we donate $25,000, which is the allowable limit that the county can give to Verone and Fairgrounds. They use that and they leverage that money to get additional money from the state. And I'm very proud to have been able to get that to the Verone Fairgrounds every year since I've been elected. But yeah, it would have to be creating spaces for families, adults and children to play.
So there's been a population shift from people living in Nogales and they, most of them have, not most of them, a lot of them have left Nogales and now live in Ria Rico. And now Ria Rico has more population than Nogales. But what we don't have is, just as been said before, we don't have a recreational area for most families. I would like to see something on the north end of Pendleton, couple of soccer fields, maybe a couple of, I'd love to see Little Lee come back to Ria Rico. When my kids were little, they fought against those dreadful people up in Ria Rico and now I live in Ria Rico, so. But I would love to see something for the youth in northern Ria Rico. The same thing that the county has done a good job putting in those paths alongside Pendleton. Let's continue that north and let's also bring some over here to San Loeida, there's no place to walk around. So that recreation would be the answer.
We're in agreement. Thank you. Supervisor Bracker. Can you explain your vision for economic development in Kelly?
My vision for economic development is to try to support the businesses that we have here first and foremost. Our location on the US Mexican border is a huge advantage for us economically. It does create its challenges with traffic, but if we deal, we've been dealing really well with the infrastructure to get, move that traffic around. Right now, the traffic is dealing, and I'm talking about the West County, I can go to East County in a second. Right now, the traffic is all congregated on Ruby Road. That hence, you've seen us go after the funding for great separated crossing over the bridge. We're also working on reconfiguration of the Ruby Road exit, the Ria Rico Drive exit and the East Frontage Road. It doesn't mean we're not looking for opportunities to extend the frontage road on the west side because that's really going to help the fluidity of traffic. If you build these types of infrastructures, you're supporting local businesses. Also during the pandemic, part of that pandemic study, the county took a million and a half dollars of this ARPA money and we gave a million dollars to local businesses. That was done through Chicanos Borocasa and we did half a million dollars to get nonprofits back on their feet and that was done through the Santa Cruz County Community Foundation. Those are the types of things. In the East County, I have supported businesses and supporting the wineries, but it's also, there has to be a balance because some of these wineries are being built right next in residential areas or right next to residents, which is why we do liquid, we are limiting commercial kitchens inside of them. We don't want party houses. We don't want to have places that are doing weddings three, four, five, six times a week in their, in their locations. So supporting businesses has always been at the, one of the tops of my agendas.
So I believe that loosening those restrictions on, for example, a winery that wants to put in a corner kitchen where its clients, instead of just drinking wine, can get something to eat along with those wines, but not something, a full or restaurant type of corner kitchen. Somewhere where you buy a pizza for five bucks and throw it in the microwave and that's it. One of the people that I spoke to, Autumn Sage, told us of the problem that he had with trying to get a kitchen to help give better service to his community, to his customers. I think loosening some of those restrictions that are in place now, not to the point of endangering people, but to the point of allowing a small-scale business to help promote the business that you're currently in, the principal business. I think that's the answer. Thank you.
I'm going to read off a couple of statistics here. I think we need to take a look, better look at nature-based restorative economy. 53.8 million county gross domestic product, this is 2019. 121.7 million in sales, 1,200 jobs and 41.2 million labor income, 4.7 million state and local tax revenue. So I, I think we need to take a look at the nature-based restorative economy and focus on that. We need to talk, to collaborate with the professionals, with the people that, that know that type of economy. It builds environmental sustainability and it really, really, it goes hand in hand with the rich natural culture, culture that we have in the eastern portion of the county.
I have a logical follow-up question now. What does nature-based restorative economy in Santa Cruz County mean to you and what does it look like?
Well. As I mentioned before, before I became an immigration officer at the Port of Amqui in Nogales, I was a park ranger for two years in Oregon Black Cactus National Monument. And we had a lot of business during certain seasons with bird watchers because that's one of the points of transit from waterhole to waterhole, the birds fly through Oregon Pipe. It was also one of our busier seasons. So I can clearly see where if you have put small, like that trailer court that I was mentioning, where a person is following, the migration of certain birds can come and take a look at the birds and then move on to the points north or points out. Paying attention to something like that, keeping that in mind, would be assisting that business and promoting that, that ideal. I do know that one of the treasures that we had in Oregon Black Cactus National Monument and we made it public was the black vulture. There's a place where they would congregate and they congregated for centuries there to the point that their droppings covered the saguaro. And the saguaro was dead inside, but it was still encased in this white poop. It was very striking in the moonlight and the morning sunlight. But we made it known and pictures were taken of it. It drew so much attention that the birds flew away. So we have to protect what we want to promote at the same time. And that's one of the considerations that we have for this kind of nature business. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question? It was what does the nature-based restorative economy mean?
What does it mean to you and what does it look like in Santa Cruz County?
Well, you know, this, this portion of the county, the entire county is a beautiful county, but this portion of the county is just beautiful and it, it truly promotes sightseeing, it truly promotes birding. So what it means to me is we find ways to, to use the nature around us to bring in tourists. Like I said, we have to be careful with, with growth. It has to be planned, organized and responsible, but we need to bring in people to see the beauty here. So nature-based is, is basically a way to use nature and what we have around us and the beauty that surrounds us to bring in tourism.
My first experience and exposure to the nature-based restorative economy was at a border counties coalition in Tucson and the Audubon Society was doing a presentation and they started talking to us about the number of visitors that would come into our community. I've lived here my whole life. I look at the birds in my backyard, but it wasn't really something that I paid attention to. But when I was, when that presentation was done by the nature, by the Audubon Society, I was blown away and I started opening my eyes and looking for this stuff. It is a really great component and that study was generated from people in Patagonia and I was happy that the county could participate in that in a small way. It includes ranching, it includes birding, it includes hiking, it includes cycling. And it really is something that in 80 years, when this mine plays out, this is what is going to be our economy in this community if we do everything right and we really got to work hard to do everything right. So part of our negotiations in our, in our community protections and benefits program is to get the mine to support portions of this, of this study.
Thank you. Mr. Fanning? Another question related to South 32. Do you advocate the permanent road that is going to be built for their trucks to go along the gas line through the national forest or for it to be routed through Locchio?
I just recently learned a little bit more about Locchio. But from what I understand and from talking to individuals who are familiar with this is that the long-term goal is to have that road come out, intersection where the Patagonia Lake is. I, you know, I, I'd like to see it, you know, I talked to someone who, who was very focused about this entire situation and talked about maybe putting up a, you know, like a blinking red light right there and have that, you know, the, the mining trucks coming out in that area which would bypass entire Patagonia. I'm not as familiar with, with what's happening at Locchio, to be very honest with you. But when it comes to the, the mining traffic, I, I might go off script here a little bit. I already answered where I think it should go, but I think there needs to be other things that people take a look at. I think there needs to be, we talked about law enforcement earlier. We need to keep an eye on the trucks that are traveling and making sure that they're being safe. We need to make sure that we take a look at traffic patterns. You know, it'd be for, during and after the building of the roads and especially when schools are letting out, when the school buses are going to be on the road. We need to take measures, whether it be rumble strips, whether it be speed bumps to slow people down a little bit. Advanced warning systems need to be put in place to keep people safe. So no matter where that road goes, and like I said, I'd like to see it go, you know, end up near the Patagonia, you know, where you can turn to go to the Patagonia Lake. Wherever it goes, I think there needs to be a lot of focus on safety.
So through the three iterations of the mining companies that have been in here studying how to move the materials out of here, somehow South 32 thought that the Locchio option was not a legitimate option. So when I brought it up to them and I asked them if they could possibly use that as their haul road, it was almost a new thing for them. So right now, they're in the process of looking for fatal flaws in that being the haul road for the mine. As far as using a gas line for the haul road, I've never been a fan of using any of the roads that intersect with Highway 82 before the airport. So I've been, I've been an advocate of Soldier Basin, but I don't think that the gas line is a, is a good option for our community. I think there's a lot of people who recreate in that area and I think that would be devastating for them. As far as building the power line through there, that's a different thing, but for them to use it as a haul road, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of that idea.
So every option has its good points and every option has its bad ones. The population has to get involved in all of these. Personally, I would prefer that they use an electrical power line instead of sending the 80-plus big tankers of propane up to the mine. That just eliminates those, that number of vehicles from the road. I also like the fact that they're going to come out from the mine to 82 south of Patagonia and a little bit south of the connection line going to Patagonia Lake. Locchio, it has to come back to the states at some point and coming down Duquesne Road, I don't see that as a viable option either. So I would say that 82 south of Patagonia, south of the Road 2, Patagonia Lake and across the South River Road. Thank you.
Supervisor Bracker, I believe it's your turn.
That's because Mr. Fanning didn't want to take my turn. I did ask Mr. Haddas.
No, actually it is, yeah, it is Supervisor Bracker. What, what is your commitment to having open communication with your constituents? How, how will you make yourself available?
That's interesting because I think I am available. I respond to my phone calls, I respond to emails and I'm pretty readily available anywhere I go. I'm in the community. I don't, I don't pull up in an office somewhere, so I'm out in the community. So people do walk up to me and ask me questions and I answer the questions as best I can. Transparency has always been, I mean, even when I got elected in 2016, transparency was a question and it was because we weren't getting our minutes out in time and it was because the meetings weren't available virtually and those types of things. And so as these suggestions have come in to say, this is how it would be better for us to be able to participate in government, I've always worked to make those things available. So now if you look at our minutes, they're generally available. We're getting, we're approving our minutes at the next meetings and if you look and you're able to attend our meetings virtually now. I would like to be able to get them videos so people can see what's happening, but we'll work on that with IT.
I think that my position as supervisor means that not only can they go to the office and find me there during office hours, I can also travel to where the community is. And it doesn't have to be this number of people. It can be two or three people or a business or someone's home that I actually go and knock on their door. Since I became involved in this political thing, ever since 2020 came around, I've been doing a lot of door knocking and I found this a very effective way of communicating with people. That's what I feel would also be effective for me to learn what the people's problems are. Sometimes people don't want to talk about what they're really concerned about in front of other people because I may be a Republican and Democrats don't like Republicans or I may be a Democrat and the Republicans don't like the Democrats. I may be a Democrat and the Republicans don't like the Democrats. So knocking on people's doors, coming into their space, I think is a very effective tool. It's slower, but that person will talk to somebody else in the neighborhood and tell them what happened, what they talked about. Thank you.
This is a question where I wish I had two minutes. I didn't know what the question was. The reason I say that is because although forums are important, town halls are important, getting out and seeing people, going to events are important. In my humble opinion, Tubac, and people have heard me say this, Tubac is different than, Tumacoakri is different than East Rio Rico, is different than Patagonia, is different than Sonoyta, is different than Elgin. So therefore, one of the things that, if, if elected, that I am one thousand percent going to do is create an advisory committee. And that advisory committee is going to be made up of people from each one of those distinct different areas, whether it be Tubac, Tumacoakri, and we'll meet once a month. That's a way to hear what is on people's minds. I'm going to find those people, and I've already talked to a few people, that are connected to the community. So therefore, I actually hear what's going on. As far as answering phones and emails, I always go with a 24-hour rule. If I get an email, I need to respond within 24 hours.
Mr. Hérez, this is the, the last question, and each of you have addressed this in some fashion, but this is a reader submitted, and it's in regards to the commitment that the county could make to the eastern part of the county for parks, recreational centers, sports fields, pools, senior centers, food banks. What can the county do to, do to ensure that some of these programs are available?
I would say loosen up the licensing requirements for those businesses here in this part of the country. We spoke about the little corner kitchens, for example. The regulations are in place for the protection of the people, of course, but why not take a second look at the zoning laws, the, the building permits? And I know, Bruce and I talked about this, where I, I didn't approve the Dollar General on the crossroads. I approve of us.
Just a second. I think the, the question is more in regards to funding for these sort of things, and can the county do anything to, to provide these sort of facilities?
Yeah, I, yeah, could you repeat that question?
Yeah, the question is, what sort of commitment and, and funding could be available from the county for the eastern part of, eastern Santa Cruz County, for parks, recreational centers, sports fields, pools, senior centers, food banks, the kind of facilities that are lacking throughout this part of the county?
Okay, there's one thing that I don't like for funding, and that's the special elections. The special elections are held at a time when no other election is taking place, and at the last special election that took place in District One, less than eight percent of the people there voted to increase the taxes of everybody in District One up by quite a while. So I think we need to be aware that we could take turns in the district. Supervisor's done a wonderful job with putting a, the paths along Pendleton. I think that was one of the greatest ideas ever, ever to take place. I consider them geniuses. We need to expand something like that, the bicycle race that goes from Nogales to Patagonia. I fear for those guys every time that that, that thing takes place, but what about a bike path along the same path that'll protect those riders and quit giving us heart attacks on the, on the road? The funding is the hard part. It has to, it has to be, without increasing our taxes, it's going to be very difficult unless we cut back on other programs, and I don't see a program that you can cut back on that would be enough, provide enough funds for that kind of thing. We need to, we need to study that problem, the problem. We need to see, first of all, what land would you use for these things? There's not that much land available in this area except for the big ranches, so we need to talk about that kind of thing. Funding, it's, it's, we're going to have to take turns District One, Two, and Three in giving everybody the Christmas bonus for a program. I don't think that that's going to be an easy question to answer.
Nor was it easy to ask.
And one of the answers, I, I mentioned that education, preservation of what we have, and representation are three of the key tenets that I, that I want to focus on. And like I said, the fourth one was recreation. And when, when there was a path, it was in the, the thought process, I had an opportunity to talk to John Maynard when I was a principal at Quotham-Munee Middle School, and that was the first path that was put in, and I hounded him, and I, and I, I really worked with him to make sure that, that this wasn't just a one-time thing. So I really pushed for that, and I was there at the ribbon cutting years and years ago. So I'm, I'm pretty passionate. I was a, I know it doesn't look like it. I was a PE teacher by trade. Doesn't look like it now, but, but I'm all for activity. And where my, I want to end this with where there's a will, there's a way, and we need to find a way to make that happen is critically important, not only for our youth, but for the older folks like me.
In my medium-term vision for the county, you will have funding for these types of things. I believe that we're going to be moving into an era of creating special districts, and these will be countywide districts, a countywide library district, a countywide recreation district, a countywide health district. And at the creation of each one of these districts, the Board of Supervisors would lower by a certain percent what we're taking from the general, what we're taking on general property tax, but if we make it a community-wide, if we make it a county-wide district, then that will encompass the mine. So if we're taking a full advantage of what we have, what is happening here, we don't have complete control over, but we can do these types of things. Then you will be able to support these recreation, these parks, these fields, not only in the east county, but throughout the county. You're talking about, right now, the town of Patagonia is asking the county for money for their library. If we could do countywide districts, then we could figure out how we want to run this thing together with the city, Nogales, the town of Patagonia, and, yeah, and I can't wait on.
Yes. We're at time, and we're, we're closing in on ninety minutes, and we're going to move on now to closing statements, and I'm going to, I'm going to shift it up since Mr. Fanning went first. We're opening statements. We're going to allow Mr. Hérez to go first, we're closing.
How much time do I have?
Two minutes.
One, two minutes. One minute. All right. So. I told you in the beginning that my mentors on the first day on the job told me that what I have to do is serve the community. Like has been mentioned before, of the five communities that we have, they're all different from one another. So you cannot apply one solution to all of the problems that, that are countywide. Goes back to listen to the community itself. What do you need? What do you want? What can we help you with? The focus has to be community-specific. That Little League field that I want to see for Nogales, for Rio Rico, that is not going to work for Nogales because they have, District One has plenty of, of fields there. How many does Sonoyta have? Well, they have Patagonia, which is the closest one. But why not have a little field here in Sonoyta as well? I don't know the child population count, but it can be used for other things as well. So my answer is, listen to what the community wants, try to do what the community needs. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fanning will go next.
Thank you. I hope this doesn't count as part of it, but I was telling my wife and my sons that I only have control of the opening and closing, so everything in between is, is a little bit different. I once again would like to thank the Patagonia Regional Times and the Tid Shet Theater for sponsoring this forum. If elected to the Board of Supervisors, I will be your full-time supervisor with the people and issues of our community being my top priorities. As a school principal and educational leader for the past 20 years, I have never made a decision based on what was best for me. I dialogue with all stakeholders about important decisions that had to be made, and from that dialogue, I made informed, educated decisions. I will use the same process as county leader if elected. I will meet regularly with constituents to discuss important topics and issues and ultimately make decisions based on what is best for District Three and the county. I would like to make Santa Cruz County District Three a place where my grandson Luca and future grandchildren can grow up and continue to thrive. Thanks for allowing me to be here today. My name is John Fanning, and I'm asking for your support and your vote to be your full-time Santa Cruz District Three supervisor. To all the fine folks in Santa Cruz County and District Three, be safe and stay healthy. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Patagonia Regional Times for organizing this event, and I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time to attend it this afternoon. This afternoon, you heard about some of the challenges, and you've heard about some of the many great things that are happening in our county and how I am addressing them. There are many issues that I deal with as your county supervisor that supervisors that aren't on the border can't even comprehend. It is my experience in dealing with these issues that sets me apart from my challengers. I have been building relationships with our federal delegation and their staffs, state legislators, and the people from several state agencies over the past 11 years, which also sets me apart from my challengers. As a result of these agencies, we've been able to track grant funding for many projects across the county, from the flyover on Mariposa on I-19 to the Ruby Road Bridge over the railroad, and the hundred, and the $10 million for the rebuilding of SR-83 in Sonoyta, to the repair of the IOI, just to name a few. I'm asking you for your vote this July so I can continue to serve you and our community. Thank you.
Thanks to everyone. Thank you very much for all.
Okay, thank you all for coming. I'm thanking the candidates and Dave for a great job, and the most important, don't forget to vote July 30th.